There it is, the six o'clock hour. And as it being 6:00 PM, I'm going to call this Sejowoli City Council meeting to order. Will you please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and roll call, Councilman Loy.
Here.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilwoman Henderson.
Here.
Councilwoman Cox.
Here.
Councilwoman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Lavaca.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, item D, looking for an approval of the agenda, and we will be adding an executive session to this, so we're looking for an approval of the agenda with the executive session. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Henderson, second by Councilwoman Diamond. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, consent agenda, items one through fourteen, this is the revised version, there was items one through thirteen, so if you've got that, we can get you a corrected page. Items one through fourteen, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If I may pull item one from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, can I pull items four, five, six, eight, and eleven?
Okay, I have from Councilman Lavaca, item one, and from Councilman Henderson, I have items four, five, six, eight, and eleven, correct?
Correct.
All right. So I am looking for a motion for items two, three, seven, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion for two, three, seven, ten, and thirteen, fourteen.
Twelve, twelve, thirteen.
Twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, moving back then to item one on the consent agenda, Councilman Lavaca.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is just in regards to the minutes that were kept, I'm not sure who keeps the minutes. I know that I made three statements when I spoke, and one was going to be for the skate park competition, and adding into that, another one was the waste facility, and another one was finding out more information about the police shooting, or the shooting that took place down at the community center. But the shooting that took place down at the community center, information requested on that, was left absent of the minutes. So I just want to make sure we do get minutes accurately recorded, and then have that added in.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Did you want a correction on that agenda?
I would, yes.
Okay. Is that possible, Kelly? Can we go back and do that?
Was a motion made for?
No, but notes were taken on all of our statements from the council, and every statement that was taken was accurate, except for that one point on mine. So it was for the minutes that were kept, and the notes that were taken for the council's report.
Was this during council report?
Council report.
Oh, okay.
Wanted to make sure about that, okay. All right, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Lavaca?
Just to make sure that we can keep those minutes as accurate as possible for future recording, and then also for just accuracy, being able to look back in time, that'd be great. Kelly, are you the one who keeps all those minutes?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so that would be awesome if we could do that, thanks.
All right, thank you. Moving on then to item four, Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So on item four, I was looking that over, and it says that we were unable to locate a forty dollar ca-- did we lose forty dollars?
Yes.
Okay, and then we're replacing that with a hundred? Or we're asking to replace that with a hundred?
Yes, this actually has already taken place, and the cash box could not be located after an employee who no longer works here their last day, and we replaced it with a hundred dollar cash box down at the yard waste facility.
Okay.
Okay, and you mentioned, item five?
Yes, all right. Mr. Bullock, this one's for you, and I could kind of couple item five and item six together, they're TIB board grant applications.
Sure.
So with each of those, we have a real estate excise tax.
Right.
Local match, and it's my understanding that the REIT funds are the only funds that we can do, that we can do, use to do improvements on our local access roads.
Actually, not quite correct, we can also use TBD funding and transportation impact fee funding, and then REIT funding is our other source we typically use to match funding sources with.
Okay, so we have those three funding sources, right?
Correct, and for these purposes, we've identified REIT funding as the best source, but that could also change, and what would happen is that is either part of budget amendments and/or project approvals, if we were going to, for instance, use TIB money instead of some REIT money or something, we come to the council with that as well, but for right now, this is the source we've identified, but those other sources are also applicable if appropriate.
Okay. Understanding the importance of an arterial repair program, it seems pretty logical to apply for these grants using this money, however, the only thing that I've been hearing for months now is how bad some of our local access roads are, and we've been having public comment after public comment about getting those fixed, and what money would we be able to set aside to tackle some of these projects if we're spending all the REIT money?
So I think I've covered this in a few prior council meetings as well, so TIB money is only applicable to collector and arterial system money, but this is part of this fall, particularly Talcot's been brought up in the past, where we're going to come up with basically a plan for some spot repairs and other things like that, and then part of that plan is coming to council and saying, okay, we can forego TIB funding for a given year, and that gives us half a million, a quarter million, whatever it may be, and we can get this far with that money. And on those local streets, unfortunately, we don't have TIB or some of these other resources to repair local streets, and so that's part of how we're going to approach that, so right now with TIB money, we, you know, force multiplier our local funds by about five times, but, you know, that's a choice, and we're going to come to council with some of those choices so we can prioritize, and perhaps what that means is we do a smaller TIB program for a couple of years in a row, and then identify like one of those roads, oh, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on it, but I believe it's Bennett Street, is a cul-de-sac that we're paving with some local funds along with our TIB projects, so that makes some sense because we can gain some economies of scale by combining some of these smaller cul-de-sacs and different things, with TIB money being funded on the same project, it's just a different funding schedule, one's funded with TIB, others funded with local, and last year when we did all of those ramp improvements, we did some of those ramp improvements on that one cul-de-sac, so now we're following through with a paving project now that we've done the concrete work the prior year. So that's an example of how we're doing a little bit of local, and then combining that with TIB project construction, and that's happening this year.
Okay, and when can we expect to see those other options for?
The plan is this fall, we, right now, we're completely focused on this year's construction schedule, which we're deep into, but that is something that we intend to do this fall and be able to come back with a few different options and discuss what the best way to approach those options are with council.
Okay, moving on to item number eight, the fire command vehicle.
All right. I guess this is for you, Chief. So we're looking at ninety-six thousand, two-hundred-and-seven total, and we're using ERNR funds to purchase some or all of this vehicle?
That is correct, all of those funds with sixty-four thousand being the actual purchase off the state contract through DES to purchase the vehicle itself, the other funds would be to outfit it with the appropriate computers, radios, lights, sirens, all the things that go with it to make it meet the standards of a command vehicle, and Glenn would be doing all the upfitting in-house to make that appropriate work happen.
What is this replacing?
This is adding to, so this would add, so currently, right now, we have the three vehicles, the one vehicle is shared between our volunteers that do the nights and weekends, and during the day, our third folk, one of our assistant chiefs, has no vehicle, so he is utilizing that during the day for fire marshal duties and battalion responsibilities, so this would allow us to, at night and weekends, to have him have a vehicle as well to be able to respond to things instead of using his POV, like for instance, the night of the shooting, when we have multiple calls, he was handling a motor vehicle accident out here at the hospital that was involved in that with no vehicle and doing it in his personal truck, so would give us the flexibility to do that and give him a vehicle to add or use his resources as well on those nights, and as well as having an extra vehicle during the day for our staff to be able to go to like confined space classes, rope rescue academies, those things in the day that we currently don't have that vehicle for without checking out from one of the motor pool vehicles here at the city.
Is it customary to do new purchases using ERNR funds?
Well, this is, we have leftover ERNR funds for this budgeted year, so normally we would have to come back and find this hundred thousand dollars to start a new purchase, but with the money left in ERNR for this budgeted year, for the money we've saved on this engine build, this would be the one-time purchase where we could do it without coming up with a non-budgeted amount, which a hundred thousand dollars is a lot to ask in one single year, where normally we would pay for this over a ten-year cycle.
Okay, ready to move on to the last item, item eleven, which is the change order, SR-20 Reed Street Temporary Signal.
I called Charlie earlier today, and Bill, he said he'd be able to explain the nuances of the contractual language in here, so I wanted to make sure that our bid amount was going to stay at seventy-six thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and sixty-five cents, and we're just changing the language not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand, but I didn't drill it plain away.
Yeah, that's correct, so one or two council meetings ago, we came to council about our temporary signal and our estimated engineering costs, we went to Fisher Construction, which is on our on-call roster, and he's one of our unit price contractors for minor construction, so this falls within the scope of that particular unit price contract, and so we asked them to take a look at it, they came back with us with their total cost being about twenty-five thousand dollars less than we were estimating, and so very favorable estimate for getting the work done, and so we're basically asking for permission to, so this requires a change order with their current unit price contract, okay, and it's basically not to exceed what their current proposal is to us.
Which is the seventy-six thousand dollars?
Which is the seventy-six thousand dollars.
Okay, so it's not to exceed that?
Correct.
All right. Okay, given that, if there are no more questions, I'm looking for a motion to approve on consent agenda, items one, four, five, six, eight, and eleven.
And Madam Mayor, if I may ask one more question on, so Chief, on the fire command vehicle out of the ERNR fund, that came from savings from another vehicle that we'd already purchased, the truck fire engine?
Yeah, affirmative. Normally our ERNR funds, we usually end up overspending because of the cost with the amount of savings we had on this with the work of Glenn finding and sourcing stuff at a better price, and having Dylan and Brandon in-house outfit this stuff and work on it together, they saved enough money to not only do this, but we're also going to hopefully bring back to you with some of those funds to buy a second sets of bunker gear here in the next couple of months as well, if that works out.
All out of the original ERNR that was set aside?
All out of the original ERNR that was for that one engine, that's under, that would, it would still be under budget for this year, it's already budgeted for that engine purchase, which rarely never happens.
Yeah, I'm surprised.
Normally we're over budget, and we're looking for other funds to piece together the items to make them whole.
And then would there be ERNR funds set aside for the replacement of this fire truck over time?
Going forward, then we'll look at that for next year to add to our ERNR fund, yes.
Excuse me, Mayor, do you want to remove item one for us to bring that back? Review the minutes and bring that back?
That would make sense if we got to remove it to adjust those minutes or amend them to the correct minutes.
Okay, so if all questions are asked, then we're looking for a motion to remove item one and to approve item four, five, six, eight, and eleven.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to remove item one and item eight, and pass four, five, six, and eleven.
You want to remove item eight?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second for that? Okay, hearing no second.
May I ask for removing item eight for the command vehicle, is it because you believe that the ERNR fund would be used elsewhere better on that one?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
Yeah. The reason I'm asking to remove item number eight is because we're just hearing about it for the first time tonight, it's a hundred thousand dollar purchase, and we haven't, we haven't heard or been shown an absolute need for it until, until it's just been talked about in the meeting tonight and put on the list last Friday, so for that reason, if it's something that we really need, we could talk a little bit more about it, but for tonight, I'm not, I'm not going to vote yes to pass it on the consent agenda.
Okay, well, it does make sense if it was just put on the consent agenda, we'd be able to discuss, it's not something you guys need urgently, is it, Chief?
The only urgency is with these rigs, right now, there's an allocation, so like with this rig itself, the only reason it's on there is we found one here locally at Bud Clary and Chevrolet that was ordered by somebody else, that is actually available today, so with Sejowoli, we don't have an allocation with Chevrolet, so they may or may not allow us to order one when the twenty-six, two thousand twenty-sixth has come out in September, so it could be a, you know, a year, year and a half to get one, this one is available today, there are some other vehicles that aren't in this range that are, you know, old police cars and stuff that haven't been picked up that could be, but it's, it was just a, an allocation that Glenn found one here locally that's available on the state contract that wasn't already purchased.
I think it's awesome that he saved that much money in doing the hands-on work here and has the availability to it, I think if it would have gone on the consent agenda, it probably would have been better just to have it in the normal topics and via first read, and then explain the purpose and the need right then, then then pass it, but--
In a perfect world, I would normally bring this to Public Safety Committee first for a new vehicle like this, but with the timing and the allocation, like you know, it takes us three to five years to get a fire engine, it took us two years to find a chassis for an ambulance, we're kind of playing that game still with some vehicles, so.
This is a rare opportunity.
I apologize for--
This is a rare opportunity, is it not?
It is.
Yeah, that's, I would agree that that would be a reason to not have it in the consent agenda, but have it as a topic, especially with such a light packet for tonight, it would have been great just to have that discussion and kind of talk about the savings, have that open, and then future purchases that you'd like to do with those savings, and we really could have addressed the kudos to Glenn and your team for all the hard work in doing that, I mean, we have the money because of that, but it would have been nice not to have--
So it's more reasonable to you to pay a whole lot more and not get a vehicle until three or four years?
It's more reasonable to bring purchases before the council, to have approved and discussed than to have it go through the consent agenda and sometimes not discussed or not missed, or not talked about, so it's not a matter of missing the purchase, purchases will be there, it's a great opportunity, but it doesn't mean we won't get a vehicle for the chief, by no means, if that's the case, and obviously, they've saved the money to do so.
Even though there's a need for it?
Even though there's a need for it, we can't slip stuff in a consent agenda that's that big of expense without a discussion, that's what the council's voted in for, to kind of discuss this stuff and have it, have it out in front of the public.
There was a fairly healthy discussion, though, tonight, is--
There is now a discussion, that is correct.
And I apologize, I should have put it on the, instead of a consent agenda, I should have put it on as an action item, you're correct.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
If I may, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Somebody who's been from the automotive industry for over twenty years, I look at this, and this is rare, it's like, I don't know, winning the lottery, when we were looking for ambulance package vehicles that weren't diesel, I had the people I worked with looking for them for more than a year, and we did not find a single one coming up on the market. When you're looking at the additions to this, this is exclusively to a custom order, and you just happen to get lucky that somebody else didn't have the money to buy it, so I am in favor of purchasing it if we do have a solid need for it, just for the fact that I know that you will wait a long time to get this if you have to custom order it.
Madam Mayor, I think it's a wonderful find, no doubt about it, and I think if we need the vehicle, it's a perfect one, I just think that the council body has voted in to look at the finances, and when big expenses are put forward, when we just passed a levy, or when we discuss budgets, or when we've got even in this one to pass for more firefighter gear, those items get discussed out in the public, that's the only thing, and I'm not doubting the validity of the need or the item itself, for sure, thanks.
Councilman Cox?
This reminds me of this old saying, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good, and this is a very good deal, and I trust the chief that it's needed, I think we should go ahead with the purchase immediately so we don't lose this opportunity.
So I am going to, we'll vote on this separately, I'm going to pull item eight, and I will go back and ask if there is a motion for, to remove item one so that the minutes can be revised, and then to approve item four, five, seven, or four, five, six, and see, items four, five, six, eight, and eleven, I'm sorry, four, five, six, and eleven, there we go. Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, going back to item eight, the purchase of the fire command vehicle, again, looking for a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item eight.
Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I would ask that we do have a discussion at the next meeting, just on the vehicles, and then also the savings that Glenn did, it would be great to be able to give him kudos and your team kudos in that meeting, so maybe a little bit more discussion on that.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Lavaca. All right, we have a motion by Councilman Burns, second by Councilman Diamond to approve item eight on the consent agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, one opposition, and that is Councilman Henderson. All right, so tonight we have actually something very special, and something that we've never done here before, and that is the swearing in of a police canine, Yogi, and then his partner, Officer Cody Veltisen. Could you come forward? So this is something that is really very, very special, wow, handsome, he's very, very handsome. When I was asked to do the swearing in, I was really unsure about what this was all about, so I went online and I discovered that this is quite common in a lot of different departments, and just because we haven't seen it here doesn't mean we can't do it ourselves, isn't that right? So I'm going to lead Cody first, or not Cody, I'm sorry, Yogi first through the, through the oath, I'll just read it, and then you all are going to take him outside and have him put his paw stamp on here, is that correct?
Yep.
All right, so, "I, Canine Yogi," I always thought he was going to bark. "As a member of the Sejowoli Police Department, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully serve the community and my handler, Officer Cody Veltisen," I hope I'm saying your name correctly.
You, yeah.
"Thank you, with loyalty, courage, and dedication, I pledge to protect and assist those in need, uphold the law, and work diligently in all assigned missions, I promise to respond to my handler's commands and perform my duties with integrity and excellence. As an ambassador for the city of Sejowoli and for the Sejowoli Police Department, I will strive to build the bond of trust and strength between law enforcement and the community that I serve, and together with my handler, I will work as a team united by our commitment to ensure safety and justice." If you agree? Ah, awesome. Awesome, okay. I'll get you, I'll get you here real quick, I'll be taking out. Such enthusiasm. We all should have that kind of enthusiasm for our job. I was hoping, actually, Chief, I don't know if you could tell the most recent account of Cody's, or not Cody, but, well, yeah, Officer Cody and Yogi's success?
Well, I think last week, there was a one subject from a previous probable cause case, and a warrant, and they fled the vehicle, and hid in the blackberry bushes and deployed the dog, and just the presence alone got the suspect to give up, so that was great.
Success, and I also heard that when there was a training, he actually outsmarted the Anacortes dog that we actually--
I don't know about that.
Okay. So Cody, I'm going to have you raise your right hand, and, "I, Cody Veltisen."
I, Cody Veltisen.
An officer of the city of Sejowoli.
An officer of the city of Sejowoli.
Do swear that I will faithfully serve--
Do swear that I will faithfully serve.
--the community and my canine partner.
The community and my canine partner.
With loyalty, courage, and dedication.
With loyalty, courage, and dedication.
I pledge to protect those in need.
I pledge to protect those in need.
Uphold the law.
Uphold the law.
And ensure the safety of my canine partner, Yogi.
And ensure the safety of my canine partner, Yogi.
I promise to provide guidance and support to my canine partner.
Promise to provide guidance and support to my canine partner.
Ensuring that we will work together.
Ensuring that we will work together.
As a cohesive unit.
As a cohesive unit.
Committed to excellence in our duty.
Committed to excellence in our duty.
And we will uphold to the highest standards.
And we will uphold to the highest standards.
Integrity, professionalism, and respect.
Integrity, professionalism, and respect.
In all interactions.
In all interactions.
And together with my partner, Yogi.
And together with my partner, Yogi.
We will strive to build trust within the community.
We will strive to build trust within the community.
And work tirelessly to promote safety, justice for all.
Promote, and work tirelessly to promote safety and justice for all.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, under City Administrator's Report, Charlie just has there, as does Tom, it's a reminder that there's a joint city council session and planning session this coming Tuesday, the 19th, at 6:30. It'll be right here in the council chambers. All right, and we'll move on to Council and Mayor's reports. So I'll start with you, Councilman Loy.
Thank you, Mayor. After our last city council meeting, I attended the meeting of a group of people that were working against the battery plant out here by us, and Nick also attended it, so, but what I learned is that the group rounded up some money and hired a lawyer, and they have a lady that is the front man, and they put in, you know, questions, so they're now in the system, so they have the right to question things, and that's about the only, she's the only one that will be able to question, as far as we know. So it was kind of an interesting meeting, not much new, same thing we heard here, but it still was worth going to, so. Then my other thing is, we're ready to go with the skateboard challenge this Saturday, and we're ready to go, and if the weather turns bad on us, we're going to go for Sunday, so it's ready to go, and everybody's got the trucks loaded up and ready, so that's my two subjects.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kestie.
Thank you. I have a few things tonight. First, I want to thank Bill for taking me on a field trip to the Roundabout at the end of John Liner, and I also went to the fair to watch the Seidra Wully High School cheerleaders in the competition, and I wanted to give kudos to Kevin Loy because he started that competition, and it was absolutely packed. You couldn't barely even see the cheerleaders, that's how far it's come, so good work on that. And then I've been asked about the status on the community center. When will it be available to rent, and can you give us an update on when it will reopen for reservations?
So along those lines, we are going to have discussion on that, especially at the September 10th meeting, and we're going to bring forward to the council discussions that we've been having in our senior management team, and getting feedback from the council, making those determinations. So after all that is said and done, then we will be able to open things back up because we'll be working under a policy that everybody agrees with, so, yeah. Anything else, Councilwoman? Okay, Councilwoman Diamond?
Good evening. I'll start with the continued complaints I get for the speeding on Ferry and State Street. I also received a couple constituents a little bit concerned finding some what they believe to be newer to them graffiti around town in Ward Three. So I just, I know that there are officers aware, but just wanted to pass that along as well because it was brought to my attention. Also, I did receive some questions from various constituents regarding the Family Promise project, some for and some against it, but regardless of the personal situation or their thought process on it, one question that came back to me that I didn't have an answer for was more of a city policy situation that could be in the future of the project, and that would be if it's under the state RC, if it's being done under the state RCW and the property itself is sold and is no longer owned by the religious service or in the Methodist Church, and that then is no longer available and utilized under the RCW and becomes owned by an entity, a nonprofit entity, how does that special use permit, how is that handled within the city if that's done? Because it was issued under the RCW issued by the state. However, if the property is sold in the midst of the project and the city's permit, how is that handled on the permitting side in regards to the city?
Nicola would hand that over to you, but is that something you'd like to do research on and bring back?
So what I do know is that Family Promise has submitted a draft of a lease agreement that would keep Family Promise in control of this for a period of 50 years. The RCW, as you're saying, it does allow basically affordable housing of any kind.
Right.
Without discrimination, so, but this lease agreement would put that into place under Family Promise's supervision for the 50 years. Potentially, after that 50 years is up, something else could happen with the property.
So does that mean that if it's filed under the lease agreement, still owned by the church itself, under religious property, that it would no longer, under the lease agreement, it's still owned by, it's still religious property, it's still owned by the Methodist Church? However, if it is no longer owned, like with that lease agreement, does that mean that they then could not purchase the property for 50 years?
So the RCW does have a statement in there regardless of if the religious organization no longer owns the property, that that affordable housing does need to be in place for 50 years, regardless of if the church owns it, so.
So, okay, so that would stay in place then, but would, and then how is the property taxes and all of that handled? Is that then, because that is all absorbed, that is, there's no property taxes or anything that is paid in that on a yearly basis, my understanding, as being a religious tax-exempt property? But if it's no longer tax-exempt, I guess that's where, like the permitting and all of that, and it's something that our city's not handled before, so I fielding questions that I don't have all the answers to, and I'm not, I just want to have the right information.
And that's one I'll need to look into.
Okay.
Those are really good questions, they are. And I don't know if, Nikki, if you wanted to add anything to this, but.
I think we should follow up with a written legal analysis. Nicole and I can circle back.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you, Nikki.
Thank you. Oh, and then just the last thing, Seidra Wully Little League is looking at the option of hosting fall clinics and scrimmages for girls ages 10 to 14. So if you have an athlete in your family, household, neighbor, whoever that might be interested, you can contact the Seidra Wully Little League for more information, or I can provide you with information for that as well. So if you have anybody interested in that, they would have had to have been rostered this last season in order to be eligible under their insurance, but they are looking at providing additional opportunities for the youth. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Yep, thank you. So I wanted to follow up from a couple meetings ago. We brought back Chapter 12.44, the special events and parades, Ordinance 2041-23, that's supposed to take effect in October. We had a discussion about reworking that and reworking some of the fee schedule for the overtime.
Yes.
And I'm just asking for an update on when that discussion's going to take place.
Yes, very good. And Kelly did send this out, she did send this out. So September 3rd, we have a work session, and we're going to address just that. I know this is very important, we know, we all know this is very important, not only to the city council, but also to our citizens as well. So, yeah, that's going to be happening, first work session in September.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Good question. Councilman Koch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to say thanks very much to Bill Bullock and Peter Lane for the tours of the new Roundabout at Magar Gail Township, plus the new Olmsted Park. I thought it was great. You can see this stuff on a map, but unless you get it explained, it really helps. I also attended the free concert at Northern State when I saw my colleague there, and I also have heard really good feedback on the summer concerts. I did attend the information session on Family Promise and the homes behind Methodist Church. I appreciated the fact that information was provided, that there was a willingness to, you know, they didn't just roll out information, they answered questions, and if they didn't know the answer to the questions, they'll get back. And they also stressed that this is early in the process, so I think people, there've been good questions already asked tonight, and I think the opportunity to ask more good questions just makes for a better community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Burns?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too have had people express concern to me about what Councilmember Henderson brought up, and I'm glad we'll be speaking about that at the beginning of September. I urge them to be patient and that we will be getting back to it. Also, I'm scheduled for a ride-along next week with one of our police officers, and I'd urge all of you to do the same if you haven't. This would be my third or fourth. I think it's a great way to touch base with them and what's going on in the city, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been going around the Olmsted Park and the construction because it's right in my ward, and both me and Wyatt Fore seeing that progress forward, so thank you, Bill, for keeping your foot on the gas with those, especially the Roundabout, because school will be starting, and I know that's a big deadline, so great to see the progress on that. I have gotten some feedback, which is nice that Councilman Henderson brought it up tonight about downtown or the neighborhoods in Seidra Wully, Tellcock, Nelson, Bennett, and the roadwork that desperately needs to be done then. And the thing that comes back, and although it's not fully understood, and we can do this on the website or via campaign somehow, but we see a lot of roadwork on Garden of Eden or Minkler Road where they're doing new chip runs, and a lot of expensive work going on to roads that seem fairly good or is comparable, and so there's a lot of people that are raising red flags in their own neighborhoods, saying, hey, why are my roads so bad? And yet so much goes to the economy out of my money for taxes specifically for roads. So maybe we can do a really good job educating that, and then as well as really diligently pursuing a slush fund set aside, somehow, you know, really tightening the purses on our budget, and start setting money aside for that project specifically, and really be able to tackle it in one big, big, we save 5% on our budget, that could be a couple million dollars a year for two years. We can definitely do a mighty work downtown and nail that out. One thing that has come up a few times, Chief, I emailed you about this today, was that shooting that took place at the community center. Obviously, it's a big topic, seems to kind of like been not in the media, of course, it's not something that's being discussed, but it's still a big concern on people's lives as they get ready to put their kids back in school, especially with events going on. Do we have any information if it was gang-related, or those gangs here, or which gangs they were? It was a shooting at a 15-year-old's birthday party at a community center, and it sounds like we're trying to make some policy on a community center, and we don't even know if the guy legally had a gun or illegally had the gun, or what gang, if the gangs even here. So getting that information is very important to the community, what we can release, I think that would be great, especially if we can do that before school, absolutely needed before we make the policy changes, if there are policy changes to be made. And then, of course, we had a light packet this week, and we have the comprehensive plan that is really big on our docket, as well as also the parade and stuff like that, and the packet was very light. Basically, everything's tucked into the consent with 14 items, and then a swearing-in ceremony and executive session. I think that we should utilize that time a little bit better for talking about the comp plan, maybe the parades, or even the fire truck, we should have had that pulled out, things like that, and that's why we have these meetings and we gather together for those purposes. So I know that the people would love us to actually do that, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Couple things that you touched on. First off, I know that the chief did respond to you regarding the shooting, and please note, my understanding is no one's trying to stonewall, we're just, there just isn't anything to report at this point, correct?
That's correct. Still active investigation, trying to figure everything out, and when we get there, we'll let you know.
Yeah, I definitely understand that part. It's that we have seen reports in the headlines of newspapers, and even Councilman Koch, who is an editor, says that, yeah, I'd show up at the police station, and when they're charged, I can write a story about it. So people are wondering, is anybody even charged? You know, I mean, we just, I think that information is important to have, if we can get it when we can.
There is no one charged at this point.
Yeah, that's right, that's correct. I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but in the media, we never ran anybody's name until they were formally charged, and that doesn't happen until the first appearance, you just can't do it because they're not charged.
Okay, all right, thank you. So I just have, I'm going to make this as quick as possible, it's been a while since we've been together, but I just want to make you aware of a few things. So there's going to be two more joint meetings with the other council members around the county, as well as the county commissioners, and the first one is September 30th from 6 to 8. The second one's going to be November 6th, also from 6 to 8. I gave you paperwork on that. It's also been sent out to you, just so you know, it is in your email. The other item from North Star is also on the 9th of September from 6 to 8. It's called "Building Our Future: From Housing Crisis to a Thriving Community," and this is going to be a discussion on the housing in Skagit County. There's many, many that believe it's essential that we come together around housing, you know, that we come up with options as far as designs, and we each, within our own residence, within our own community, have our own needs, and so to talk about those and how we are looking or planning to move forward with it. So I did print those off, but like I said, it is also in your packet, so I would encourage you to check that out if you want more information, and thank you.
Madam Mayor, is that, both sessions are the same session, or two separate sessions that work off of each other?
They're two separate. So we, you've been to a couple of them, so as you know, we're doing quarterly. So every quarter, we do a joint council and commission meeting, and we have those discussions around the needs within the community, what's happening, and where we want to go from there. So, yeah, so appreciate your participation in those, by the way.
To, if you were to do both invites, I guess, that's what I'm, separate meet?
Yeah, so they'll be two separate, they're just, so you can put them on your calendar, but they do also call for RSVPing. The other thing is, so our Senator Waggoner and Representative Carolyn Eslick, they were given an award, it's the 2025 Behavior Health Champion Award. It came from NAMI, and if you're not familiar with NAMI, NAMI is the National Alliance on Mental Illness, and it's the work that they did, actually, within the joint legislative body and the executive body on behavior health. They have been advocating for rural mental health, which we all know is greatly needed, and so I had the opportunity to be there when they received the awards, and were given accolades for that. We have two great representatives there, and we're very blessed to have them as our fearless leaders down there in Olympia. Carolyn Eslick, too, just so you know, she's quite an advocate for both the elderly and the youth, and she sits on a council for children and youth behavior health, it's a work group, and she does great work there. So anyway, when you see them, thank them for their great work on that, because, you know, it's like pushing a rock uphill, it's just almost impossible sometimes to get the funding for those things that we really need. We've already talked about the August 19th, next Tuesday, the meeting at 6:30. I spoke with Judy Hogus today, we, I, about a month ago, was interviewed by Channel 13 regarding the best battery system that they want to put in right outside of Seidra Wully. She said she captured that, and she's posted it on Stewards of Skagit, if you want to see that interview. There's also a reminder, once again, that on the 9/3, on the 3rd of September, we're going to have the special events discussion, and then the following week at council on the 10th, we'll have the community center discussion. Kind of looking ahead, I want you to be aware that we're going to be coming before you and talking with you about the Public Defense Grant. We're also going to be talking about the prosecution reappointment, the judge reappointment, so keep those in mind, be watching for those, we'll be looking for any input that you may have on that. And also, just a reminder, huge thanks for your work on giving us the opportunity to hire an HR manager. We are working on the final employment details, we have somebody that we will be announcing soon, and this person will be starting in September, so really, really great work there. So thank you. All right, and those two were sent out to you via email, so you can find those in your email if you want to, want more information. All right, that said, we will move on to public comment. It is 6:48, and we ask that you keep the comments to about three minutes, we ask that you give your about three minutes. We ask that you give your name, and then maybe how you are associated with the city of Seidra Wully. I see that there must be a sign-up list. Yes? Okay. And we'll start with those, and we can take it from there. Thank you, Kelly. Turning the button on. All right. All right. So, oh, Audra Wall, we have you down first. Okay.
Hello. My name is Audra Wall. I'm a Seidra Wully resident, and I operate Family Promise of Skagit. My staff sent me with a little elevator pitch. I'm here on behalf of Family Promise of Skagit Valley, where our mission is to simply, simple but urgent, to end family and child homelessness in our community. Right now, in Skagit Valley, at least 1,400 children go to sleep tonight without a stable place to call home. Since opening our doors in 2015, we have walked alongside 1,013 families and 2,151 children, helping them find safety, stability, and a path to permanent housing. And the need hasn't slowed. In just this year alone, 2025, we've already served 133 families and 261 children. This September 6th, we will be gathering at the Swindhamish Lodge for our gala, Houses of Many Colors: 10 Years of Cultivating Home. It's a celebration of what this community has accomplished together, and a call to action for the next decade. We'll be raising critical funds to expand our housing programs and sharing exciting plans about the future for Family Promise of Skagit Valley. We couldn't do any of this without our community partners, donors, and volunteers, including many of you in this room. Tonight, I would like to invite you to join us, attend the gala, spread the word, maybe sponsor the event. If you know anybody who has auction items, we would love those. And I'm going to leave packets in the back, so anybody can take a packet, or there, feel free to email me.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Audra. Anyone else for public comment? Yes. Would you like to come forward?
My name is Dennis O'Neil. I reside at 106 Telkot Street. And usually, I could get up here quicker, but I had a stroke about four or five months ago, and it's really slowed me up. It's just not much fun. Actually, I just need to get stretched out a little bit. Gosh, it's tough sitting back there. Anyway, what I'd like to see is a little bit more information during these meetings. It seems like it's been cut back quite a bit as far as to the public that's sitting out there watching off the TV screen, off their home screen, that it seems like there's just a real bare minimum of information coming out. And I don't know if it's supposed to be confidential from everybody in the town, but the city council and a few others. And I understand the need for some of that, but it seems like it's going that doorway more and more, and condensed, and I doubt very much, it's very condensed about the information coming out. And I guess that needs to be done, but I don't really understand sometimes the purpose of you just go through formalities. And that's too bad, because it seems like that's the way it's continuing to go. And I think a lot of people would like to know a little bit more what their, what their money's paying for, and a little bit more fill in the dots or whatever, instead of having to come down or sit here and stand up here and ask questions. And the way the mayor has done, and I'm going to put it on the mayor, because she's running the show here, and a lot of this stuff doesn't get out. And it's really unfortunate that it's, the people that are paying the bill and everything is being cut back on what you're telling people. And I guess that when you're sitting up there, you get all the information in between, and nobody else gets it. So, I think that's a real, a real issue here. It's getting to be more and more that way here, and also with the other sizes, the other government forces that are in play. And, you know, it makes the paper that much more worthless to a lot of people. And I wondered if you could do something about that, start getting more, a little more freedom of information rather than just the need-to-know basis to the people up there who can understand it. But I don't think a lot of people really fully understand it on that side up there behind the counter. I think that's one of the main things that's going on here. It's just quiet need-to-know, and that's just too bad. I like the dog. My neighbor's got one like that. I'll tell you, it's just a joy to watch him when he barks and everything, gets to know people. He's a lot friendlier than when he doesn't. He's a little bit bigger than that guy, but not much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Not seeing anyone else. It is 6:54. I will close public comment. And we currently do not have any unfinished or new business, which moves us right to executive session.
Madam Mayor, right here, can I make a personal point of privilege, just to talk about information that we get? If that's right. So, what, I was surprised when I first ran for council to the information that the council seemed to have, but when I got elected, there was packets that are posted on Friday, and we get the packet the same time the public gets the packet. Sometimes it's 900 pages, sometimes it gets revised the day before, and we've got to be on top of it. And we have to read 900 pages and really dig deep into this stuff. But it's the same information that all the public gets, and there's, there's not any back information that is not available. I was surprised at the transparency when I got elected compared to the way I thought it was. And it's a lot of paperwork. It's 900 pages, but it is available online. It's at the website, and I just want the public to know that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. All right. So, it is 6:55. We will take 15 minutes to start with. We usually go beyond that. So, we'll be back at 7:10, but if not, I'll be back to let you know how much longer we're going to be. Thank you. going to be. Thank you. All right, it is 7:10, and we are back from executive session. This was under RCW 42301101I. And it was a discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation, and no action was taken. With that, if there is anything for the good of the order, all right, everybody have a wonderful evening. We are adjourned.